Audio taped, if anyone else is either video or audio taping, please let us know. So we'll go take that as a no, so we will go to full business. Now, let me say one thing. This is the rainstorm drainage issues, it's a continued discussion. I talked to town council earlier in the day and have been advised to step down on this issue because it involves a relative. So I'm going to step down on the issue and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Nardi, who has information pertaining to the issue.
Received a memorandum from town council, and I'll read the memorandum from council. From Patricia Kanter. Spoke with Attorney Kanter, Town Council regarding the above matter based on the facts as presented. Culvert slash drainage pipe installation at location referenced occurred several years ago with no impact. Private property owner modified, converted, location referenced within the last few years. Based on limited information, it would appear that this is a private property matter and a liability to the town would be remote. So basically, what David said, he reached out to Patricia Kanter, our town council, and it looks like, I've researched this a little bit, I mean, I'm new to it. Mr. La Bash is in here, David's recused himself from this. First Wind has pretty much removed themselves from this project now financially. They had stepped up at one point and it was brought to my attention that they're willing to help with the project and help pay for some of the repairs that were needed at that time. They have since closed their financials. They're no longer willing to move towards this or do anything regarding it. Mr. Fountain sold the pipe. The house was then sold with the pipe and it's in part of the plot plan there shows that the pipe there. The original pipe that was there, when I researched this, it was actually there longer than me. I think it's been over fifteen years that the original pipe went facing into the property and then the other pipe was added onto it. Personally, my opinion to this and reading what council stated, I think it is a civil matter between the homeowners and Mr. Fountain. I think Mr. Fountain needs to step up to the plate, so to say, or help out with this. The pipe was added and the property was sold. I understand your concern with your leach field and the drainage that's on the back there. If it was my property, I would have an issue too. I built out here, I had an issue with a builder that, when I built my property and stayed on it for years after that to fix some problems. Unfortunately, First Wind, like I said, is not going to help out at all at this point in time. They've removed themselves, so I don't know, I don't think it's a town problem. I believe council has clarified that if we stepped in and tried to have our highway department do something with that, we're going to become liable for it. And I think we'd have to take the project on 100% and they're recommending that we don't do that. So, at this point in time, I would say it's probably a matter between, my opinion is it's a matter between Mr. Fountain and the homeowners.
I have a question. Is the town's water coming through the pipe? So how is that not a town issue?
Well, the water coming through the pipe was redirected by Mr. Fountain when he put the other pipe, attached the eighteen inch pipe to the twenty-four inch pipe, which is now making a drain on the back of your property. So I probably can't, I probably can't answer that question why? Being that it is town water that was draining, the initial portion of the property to start. Do you have anything to add, Becky, regarding planning and conservation as far as the water was draining there originally?
To the best of my knowledge, in the past, they've always taken, the town has, in the board of selectmen, have always taken the stance that, you know, that pipe was installed, even the original portion of it, not the extended part, but it was installed with the then property owner's permission.
With Mr. Fountain, at that point?
Right.
And then he had...
And, I mean, frankly, it could have probably been in even before Jim owned it. I don't, I don't know how far back that first part of the pipe goes, but...
So what?
Historically, the town has taken the stance that, you know, unfortunately, if a home, somebody purchases property, you know...
So if it's our pipe, we can do what we want with it. So if it backs up on, so if we cap it off and it backs off to the street, it then becomes a town problem. If it's our pipe, we own it, we can do what we want.
The pipe is on your property, correct?
So we can cap it and then it's the town's problem if it washes out the road? If it floods every house on Bemis Road, it's the town's problem?
We can't tell what the good budget is. I don't think we have the right to do that.
If you actually look at the easement, the easement is never written properly.
It's not proper.
So there's no granted access for the town to have any right to the pipe, to maintain the pipe. So there's actually no right for the water to actually go onto the property now, though it's on the site plan as a hand drawing. It was never documented properly and at this time, there's damage to the property due to water flow coming from the town.
Tom, you got it right?
Yes, I have.
So your opinion on the pipe and the drainage?
In my opinion, as the highway survey for the town of Warren, it's a private property issue, which is of my...
Being that the pipe was installed prior to your arrival too. I mean, it's been fifteen years.
I don't know when it was installed.
At least.
Tom, didn't you, Tom, didn't you say that you put the first part of the pipe in to pass a rock wall?
The only portion of the pipe, the only portion of the drainage up there, if you look at the map that I enclosed in my folder, is a pipe that goes from a manhole that the solar project installed to hold the electricity to the catch basin
That's the highlighted orange.
On the intersection of Bemis and Little Rest Road, which is about fifteen feet. Other than that, every piece of pipe up there.
That's the one that goes into your property. That's, the orange highlighted is what...
When was that installed, Tom?
That was installed maybe two months ago. While they were, while they were trenching to put the pipe in for the solar project. I gave them authorization to put a pipe from their manhole cover to a catch basin, which is about fifteen feet. Other than that, every piece of pipe on the ground up there was in the ground prior to May 4th, 2010.
So has that pipe done anything to cause any other additional problems to their property now?
To my knowledge, no.
Has it helped? I mean, has it lessened the flow? I mean, what is the, what was the purpose of the pipe?
Purpose of the pipe was to drain the water out of the hole in the area of the manhole for the solar project. What's happened is, it was a, it's a precast, I think it's a fifteen by twenty foot by ten foot precast basin. What's happened is that was filling up with water and the water was coming up through the manhole and freezing the road in that intersection. So to alleviate the ice problem.
So if they cap their pipe, which is on their property right now, that water's not going to come out in the back of their property and it's going to come back into the road? It causes huge erosion issues and other problems, correct? I mean, it's not going to go anywhere else except puddle air and...
Correct.
And we will do that. We will, if it's our pipe, we're going to cap it, so...
Well, go ahead.
John, you said it wasn't documented properly. I mean, it is on the A and R that the planning board signed.
Yeah, on my closing documents, on the certificate of title, every piece of paper, you know, all the exhibits, nothing shows the easement itself. The only thing that is stated is a one sentence that says easement for drainage on the western side of the property. There's no, nothing documenting a deed or plan granting access to the town to put the water through. So that drainage, as far as I'm concerned, could be a perimeter drain. It would have nothing to do with the town's water.
We had an easement on a prior property that we owned and it was documented, a different deed, a different book, a different everything. It was documented exactly what that easement was. This just says very plain verbiage. It doesn't say that there's an easement for the town. And your water's coming through our property.
And currently damaging the property.
Yeah, damaging the property.
Tom was up there a couple days ago and viewed the property and viewed other avenues of rerouting the water and he put some input on this as well.
So what was that, when you went up there, Tom, rerouting his water? How difficult is this going, would be potentially? What are we talking, were we talking about rerouting the water still?
If you take a look at the map there again, I came up with two different options. One is to...
Is this the light blue?
Both of them right, both of them are light blue. One of them is to come off of the...
Do you want to read it? I can share with Becky.
No, I just got to get my parents.
So one would be actually going over to the property on their right side, which is Mr. Fountain's other property? Which is one of the drawings and the other drawings seems to be going back?
One of them would be to connect the catch basin on the southwest corner of Little Rest Road and Bemis Road. Extending it about sixty-five feet into the intersection. Install on a catch basin and then continuing that pipe to the existing pipe heading down west towards Joaquin Colgel. The other option is to extend the culvert on the south side of Bemis Road across from the Williams property. Extending it down the road and exiting it onto the adjacent lot to the east of the Williams property.
So the first option here, I'm just curious, if the water was draining where it's pointing here, is this going to impact their property on the right side of their property? I mean, this is draining now to the back of their property?
Potentially it could, yes.
So it could cause another problem?
It could. The other issue with the first option of continuing it down Little Rest is it's eighteen inch pipe and it would be a distance of probably two thousand feet plus long of eighteen inch pipe. And with significant rains in the way that the drainage has been in the past in that area, it could be too much velocity for the eighteen inch pipe that already exists on Little Rest Road.
And it's going down now.
Yeah, it's going down here.
Between which, which would be the better option?
There's existing pipe between Joaquin Colgel and Little Rest Road on the south side of Little Rest Road. That is existing eighteen inch pipe. Technically, it should probably be twenty-four, if not thirty-six, to accommodate the volume of water that would now be traveling down there. It all depends on how the drainage has changed now with the solar fields too. But I know when I first came on, Little Rest Road was flooding because of the amount of water that was shedding towards the drainage as well as some corrections with the drainage pipe that I made that did help it.
All right. Well, reading the memorandum from council, I mean, I don't personally, the town doesn't want to get involved with this matter and they're recommending it being a civil matter between Mr. Fountain and the homeowner. I have a problem as a selectman, as a resident, reaching out to Mr. Fountain or even myself. I know we've spoken to Neil and about this being closed. I haven't spoken to Neil myself personally. I don't, I have a pretty good relationship with him. I don't think it would hurt if I extended that to him or discussed it with him one last time to see their stance. Becky had reached out to him. I don't want to make a decision on it now, but right now it just looks like a civil matter, but I don't have a problem myself reaching out to Neil and asking Neil if there's some help there and actually speaking to Jim. I know Mr. Fountain's down here right now, but I would like to sit down with Jim and talk to him about this. I personally think it's, if I had to lean one way or the other, I think, you know, the contractor put the pipe in and made, created this problem, in my opinion. And it looks like it would be his responsibility to have to fix this issue. I mean, he sold you the property, it's draining now, your leach field's being flooded, there's a huge amount of water being gathered there. That pipe was modified by Mr. Fountain when they built the house. So I would say the responsibility would lie with him, but I have no problem in continuing this and reaching out to him this week, tomorrow with Mr. Fountain and to Neil again and then reporting back to us. We do have a meeting next week, but we only have a one item agenda. So I don't know if David will want to entertain putting it on next week and bringing my findings out. But I will personally reach out to Mr. Fountain and Neil again to see if there's anything else we can do before it ends up going that direction. We're in probably you against Mr. Fountain, civil court.
I'd just like to confirm, you know, as far as the source of the water. If the pipe that came from that culvert exited into the property, say fifteen years ago, and this house was only built just a year ago, and that was the existing pipe onto the property. When that extension of pipe of three hundred and thirty feet was added onto, who allowed that? Who inspected it and who permitted that at that time?
That would have more issue, because we were discussing that earlier, Becky, about how far back that pipe went and it's well past fifteen years. But we can, we can research that, right?
Right.
And find out the information, find out when that pipe was put in.
You're talking the extension though?
The extension of the pipe, I mean, who, who would have allowed to have access to the town's water storm drain system to allow a connection and now create such a problem that we're in now?
Right.
We have pictures of the exact day the pipe was put in. Our neighbors across the street took pictures of everything, so...
Okay, can you bring those to the next meeting? I mean, we can, we can definitely find out when that pipe was put in. I can reach out to Neil, I can reach out to Jim myself and discuss it with them and then report back on those three issues. And if you can bring in the pictures and, you know, if we have better clarification as to when that pipe was put in, how long ago, it might help us backtrack to how it got to that point.
As far as Neil's standpoint was, you know, they wanted to extend the pipe further, an additional couple hundred feet. They, they had no interest in repairing the damaged section now, so in fact, they would just extend...
But how long has it been since it's been damaged? I mean, I, I was made aware of that, maybe about two months ago when I first came in the office, that they were looking at that this was a potential problem. They were looking at extending the pipe. Was it damaged back then?
Yes.
Eroded, that bad done?
Yeah.
So it's just, they were just basically trying to do a quick fix, just to stop the water and stop creating any more damage, but there's already... I would need to see the pictures. I've been near property, but I'd like to see the damage and what's been done personally, myself.
We submitted pictures yesterday.
The initial property was owned, you know, by the, by Jim Fountain and some other people as well. At the time, you know, as the golf course had existed, so when that pipe was installed, it was installed onto Mr. Fountain's property, exited to the backside of the property and he still owned the property. Now this pipe exits to a new buyer, or new purchaser, you know, First Wind. And, you know, my concern too is I'm liable for the town's water supply exiting onto my property and damaging the solar project according to First Wind.
They already told us if they have damage, they're coming after us.
The police have?
Neil did.
Directly.
He absolutely did. I just don't understand, if it's the town's water, how is the town not, the town's water is coming on to our property?
But it went, it's going on the private, well, it's going on the private property and then a private contractor added a pipe to that, which diverted the water to another area. So, and I don't know if it's still considered town's water. I mean, the water is being dumped there, but he has modified those pipes and changed the direction of the flow of the water on his own. So my opinion, and that's leading him to be liable for that. He's made those adjustments and modifications to the pipe. He's causing these problems. As a homeowner, I would be looking at him saying, you know what, what are you going to do? You modified it, fix it. I don't think you'd have a problem winning that one either, to be honest with you. I mean, I think it's a legitimate claim. But I would still, like I said, if you could bring in the colored pictures, the pictures you actually took, I will call Neil, I will call Jim. We will research when the pipe was put in and get that information. So if it's not, we're going to have to notify them, it's going to be next week or the week after.
Yeah, she keeps taking time off, so...
I keep taking Tuesday, I work Tuesday nights, every Tuesday. So every day I go here...
I have a problem contacting, you know, kind of contact.
Well, I have to get your answers.
Yeah, I mean, I can...
They're satisfied to be contacted first, right?
Yeah, if you're satisfied with being contacted personally later this week, you know, in the early evening, I can give you a call at home and talk to you about some of the things that I've found. We can go over it, you know, call the office, leave your number with the runner, Becky. I would gladly return your call.
And what happens if Mr. Fountain says, I washed my hands of this, it's not my problem? And then we do cap it off and then it is a town problem? What happens then?
It's probably going to become our problem. If you have to write the cap, it's your pipe, it's on your property.
Yeah.
It would then become our problem.
It's going to cost a lot for the town when it washes all the road.
So, prior, for me knowing that information now, if that ends up happening that way, I want to prevent it before it happens now. You know, I hope it doesn't come to that, but I don't want to have the road get washed out, cause more work for the highway department and have to spend all those funds to repave the road, fix the drainage, it's going to cause a hell of a lot more, excuse me, a lot more issues down the road. Anything you need to add, Tom? You know, I'll do this, it's Tuesday now, I should hear from them. I will definitely contact them Wednesday, Thursday and have something possibly by Friday or this weekend. If you can leave us your number with the office, I will contact you personally. Anybody have anything you want to add to that or any questions or, no? Tom's good.
Would it be possible to have one of us, like, come see the site?
Yeah, I would volunteer. I mean, I don't, when are you, when are you home, when's a good time?
I actually have, I have the next eight days off, so...
I could probably stop, personally myself, I could probably stop by tomorrow night, maybe around five or six. I have obligations during the day, but I could probably come by tomorrow afternoon. So if you can call tomorrow, leave your number, if you call tomorrow, I can leave you my cell phone number and then on my way back out of wheels, I can swing by and take a look at it.
Okay.
I have a problem doing that.
All right.
All right.
It'd be good to get another set of eyes on it, so...
Yes, not a problem, I will do that tomorrow. I'll give you that information, please. Yes, so I'll get it from you. All right, that's it. So we need to get David back in here. Can somebody pop their headlock, please? Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Before we get into comments and concerns, Igor, you're off.
I'd just like to make a comment about the meeting of eight twenty-six. What happened was that we had a programming error in the computer. We had a glitch, so the meeting didn't go on as supposed to at six thirty PM. By the time we straightened the whole thing out and reprogrammed it, we got fifteen or seventeen minutes, I think, missing the beginning of the meeting, which was mostly comments and concerns. We had a few complaints. A few people stopped me and I apologized to them and just please understand, we tried to do the best we can and as many of you probably know, when something on the computer goes wrong, it takes a little bit of while to reprogram the whole thing and we started the whole thing, we had to do it. And we did get a phone calls during the meeting, but we fixed it. Whatever was talked about that first fifteen minutes or seventeen minutes, we don't have a record of it. But the rest of it is on the record and anybody wants a DVD of the rest of the meeting, we gladly supply them with that. But it's running right now, it should be fixed, we work on it. So we were trying to minimize all those glitches and all the programming errors that come up sometimes. Computers, as everybody knows, are a little bit touchy sometimes and it's easy to make a mistake and once you put that little one dot in the wrong place, it's completely gone, something. So that's what we did and that's what happened to us. Once again, we were trying to do our best and let's hope it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Comments and concerns, does anybody wish to address the board? All right, we'll go to Forrest Horn.
Forrest Horn, it's a memo from Chief La Boy extending an invitation to the members of the board of selectmen as well as the town employees and all residents to take part in the nine eleven memorial service on Thursday beginning at eight forty-five AM at Station A. In addition, athletes from Quabog will participate in the twelfth annual free run and will be escorted by the fire department from the ceremony.
I will try to get there if I can, I'll find out tomorrow if I can.
Spencer Bank is requesting permission to hold their fourteenth annual pumpkin pumpkin carving, excuse me, contest on Monday, October twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, from six PM to eight PM. Note, the police and park department have been notified.
I have no problem with that.
No. Notification from Bay State Roads Program that Town Woodrow Highway Surveyor has achieved the rank of roads scholar. Mr. Woodrow has achieved this distinction by completing numerous required courses. Sorry if I butchered your last name, Tom. I apologize. Correspondent, I'm sorry. Correspondence from resident Darlene Fisher of thirty-six Otis Street. She called to express her displeasure from the Board of Health in not representing her repeated calls regarding a rodent issue as well as a dumpster that appears to be the source of a problem. The Board of Health Office stated that the chairman has been notified and Ms. Fisher would like the matter addressed.
We want to tell from the board if they could give us some type of written update on that?
And I did speak to Ken Lacy regarding that. He has been out there to look at that area. He will supply us with something regarding a written response to that. Correspondence from Luis Vecchio, former director of Quabog Theater Group in Warren, has granted permission to the friends of the town hall to use, dispose of, sell or donate theater costumes stored in the town hall building.
Has that been done yet? Very good, thank you.
A letter from the Warren Action Committee expressing concerns over the Board of Health holding meetings at twelve noon when residents are not available to attend. The Warren Action Committee feels that this is a disservice to the people in the town.
I think it's probably already gone to the Board of Health, but could we just forward another one and again ask for an update?
Correspondence from Susan Tower, Director of the West Warren Library. This letter is in response to numerous complaints that went unanswered by the library. Ms. Tower was not the director at the time and since her return, has reached out to Agri Party.
Okay.
That was the one, that was the one that there was something left on the screen?
Yes.
Representative, small one.
Yes. Follow-up from Chief Berkhouskian in response to the Board of Selectmen's request to mitigate targets, mitigate target items as outlined in the Board of Health condemnation order. I did speak to the chief, he said here. That list that we comprised the last meeting, those items that we wanted the chief to start to look into and start to take care of, I sent an email to the chief, I did speak to the chief today. Somebody had it on here, have been looked at to an extent but not completed. What I've asked the chief is in regards to some of these items to hire a licensed pesticide company to take care of the rodent issue, not just put down traps. Legally within the state of Massachusetts, you have to have this, this is a requirement. You can't just go out and lay down traps and dispose of animals, rodents yourself. We're looking into that. He had had the carpet steam cleaned by a cleaner that they had rented. I have asked him to hire a professional cleaner to come in and do the carpets. At this point in time, we don't know if we're going to replace those carpets or not. When I toured the building, when Joe Devine, Joe Devine was with Leonard at the time, they discussed that, they were taking measurements, but we're not actually sure if we're going to. I think they need to be steam cleaned. He has money to be able, for it to be done and should be taken care of. So a lot of these items that are on here, steam cleaning of carpets, replacing the fluorescent light covers. I'm working with a gentleman in West Springfield right now to find out if we can find those covers. Getting a name and trying to find some of these things and fix them. So we went through this list, he is working on it. Next week, I have a meeting with Ken Lacy. We're going to go through the town hall and update the condemnation and see what stuff has been taken care of, what can be removed from the list and where we can go from there and what needs to be addressed. It's been a year since the Board of Health's been in there. The chief has requested them come through. I personally reached out to Ken. It will happen, we're going to go out there, we're going to meet. I'm going to tour with them and update those records. We are moving on these things, you know, with the, with the formation of the committee coming up soon, I think things are going to start to move. But I have requested the chief to utilize those maintenance funds for the purpose of fixing the building. If he exhausts those funds, I have no problem with him going to finance and then coming to us looking for money to fill the account. But utilize the funds for what it's meant to do and satisfy the needs of the residents and let's start fixing what we can afford to fix at this point in time. Make some progress.
Is the letter of condemnation still in effect or is that...
It's not a letter of condemnation anymore. It's a letter of what we have to fix and order. I don't think it's really condemnation anymore and I'm not quite sure how to put it.
It's not a condemnation, but it's, it was called it originally, but it's not...
Originally called that, but it was downgraded because they said, you can't do that and the council came in.
Correct, and that's why I requested Ken, Mr. Lacy, to come out and revisit the building and give us a new order. Tell us what is wrong and how we want to label this and what we want to call it. Is it a condemnation or is it not?
What will it take to get rid of those barriers in front of the building?
That part I haven't addressed yet. You know, I know it's a huge concern, it's a huge concern of mine. I would love to just see those three acres gone. But it's going to take money and it's going to take Leonard and, you know, getting on top of that, which we had them in last week, you know. You've got to, the committee, I think once the committee is formed, the committee has to tell us what's important to them and there are eyes and ears to this and that's why I'm in favor of this. They need to look at this and tell us what they want to do and let's expend these funds the way we should be doing it. We can't do this, but you, them reporting to us will be able to facilitate this much faster. There's only so much that I can actually put into...
There's only so much that I can actually put into that, so the committee's going to be a great help. I do think it's going to be a definite step in the right direction to help facilitate some of the bigger problems down the road, and give us recommendations.
But it's typically not a condemnation order anymore. I don't know what to call it at this stage. But when we brought town council in and looked at it, and we had town council before the Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen was there, and town council was there, it can't be condemnation because there has to be certain things to do that. And we know that the building inspector, as far as the construction of the Town Hall, would not issue a condemnation order. We double-checked with that before we brought town council in, and the building inspector's been on board all the time saying that the structure of the Town Hall is not enough to condemn it. The only thing left to the Board of Health at that point was the asbestos and things like that, but it would have had an order to fix rather than a condemnation.
And some of these other things, like the windows and the plastic being taken down. You know, the chief makes a good point. You hit the plastic down, the winter time comes, they're running space heaters in some of these offices, but we do need to get airflow through the building. So, you know, can we find screens? What's it going to cost to put screens in these windows? Because when Leonard came through and they looked at the windows, they had no intention to replace them. He said the windows were in great shape. They need to be worked on a little bit, but they weren't looking at replacing them. And to replace those windows, it's going to be easily $1,500 a window. We just redid them in West Side, and they're windows, and they were $1,500 a window. It's not a cheap fix. The windows are still in working condition, but they need screens. They need to be open. The ventilation needs to happen. You know, the ventilation for the bathroom, I spoke to the chief about that. You know, I'm not proposing that we drill a hole through the walls of the historical building, but you can vent through a window. You can buy a piece of material that can vent through the window to get the airflow moving out of the roof. So there's options out there. We just have to get prices on them and start to react to them. But under those circumstances, are we looking to drill through the walls right at this point in time and fix that problem? But we have addressed all of them. The chief is working on them. I will be meeting with him and the Board of Health.
You can power vent through a wall. You can power a vent through two and a half feet of wall.
But it's... You're venting it through the exterior of the building, which is... You're changing the shape. You're drilling a hole through a historical... You know, you can't just drill a hole through the building. It's just like putting a door on the building. It has to have the same historical value to the... You know, you can't just... I know I could in my house, but that building, no. So that's why I'm making a recommendation that we go through the window and utilize the window, just crack it and put some sort of vent in there, get the airflow. It'll help with the mold and keep it down. That's it.
No, we have one more.
Well, just one more thing on the Town Hall, ultimate of eight minutes scheduled to begin. They work the week, the 22nd and the 29th, so within the next two to three weeks.
And from this point, once the committee is appointed, that's going to be turned over to the committee, so they'll be the ones dealing with the engineers and so forth. But right now, as Becky said, that's when it's scheduled to start.
When is it going to start, though? The ultimate abatement through the rest of that assistance from tile?
Those that were stained, there's leaks in there.
For the four thousand...
And the last correspondence, August 2014 report from the Animal Control Officer, Sarah. Put it out, put it out, excuse me.
Okay. I'm going to have to skip the application for a liquor license for at least 15 minutes. It has to be 7:15. The next item would be the senior center director position. If you want to blame anybody, you can blame me on this one. I rescheduled it. We don't usually meet next Tuesday. I scheduled it for next Tuesday. It's a one article, Selectmen's meeting. My reason for doing that is that Mr. Lavash is not here tonight. We usually don't appoint this as a full board for some, that type of a position. So I canceled it for tonight, and it's on for next... Excuse me, next Tuesday at 6:30. And it's an open meeting, but it's done only so we'll have a full board, so there'll be a complete vote on who gets it. Next item is the Town Hall Remediation Committee. What have we got, Becky?
In your folders. We're looking for two participants from the Friends of the Town Hall Committee, two participants from the general population, and one person, two from the Board of Selectmen.
All right, let me ask this. Did the committee meet or anything decide, and who? Give us the two names.
Did she send them to you?
I have. I just wanted to make sure it's from the town, from the remedi... From the Town Hall Committee. We have Arlene Norman and... What's the other one from your committee?
Madeline.
That's from your committee? Okay, that's fine. So we have a request for the name Arlene Norman and Madeline Batasik to the Town Hall Remediation Committee. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we appoint Madeline Batasik and Arlene Norman to the remediation committee.
I will second that. All in favor? Aye, aye. So there'll be a slip, you know, committee can get it from Becky or the Selectmen's office, and it gets sworn in. Now, we also have... We also have, at this stage, we have a letter from John Mooney that wants to be appointed as a member at large, and we have a letter from Brian Corville who wants to be appointed as a member at large.
Mr. Mooney.
Mr. Mooney is here.
Key members.
Yep, and then a member from the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Lavash expressed his interest in that, didn't he?
Excuse me?
Mr. Lavash.
Mr. Lavash asked to be put on.
What?
Mr. Mooney, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Why do you want to be on the board?
Basically because I've lived in this town my whole life, and I think it would be a shame to let the Town Hall go to pot. And I have a vested interest in the Town Hall. I've played in that Town Hall as a child, and I would like to see it refurbished and go back to its glory.
David, you have any questions?
No, I know that he is... He does painting and papering and then all handymans type of stuff.
Well, for the most part, I've been on many, many construction projects. I know how, in this case, the roof needs to be addressed, and I know the working of a roofing project from start to finish, and I think I would be an asset to this project between this committee and this one.
I have no problem.
I'd like to make a recommendation that Mr. Mooney be appointed to the... I'm sorry. The remediation committee for the Town Hall.
Now, that was a motion, I take it.
That was a motion, yes.
I will second it. All in favor? Aye.
No.
You got it. I have to come in and see the Board of Selectmen's office. They'll give you a appointment certificate and get sworn in by the town clerk. Make sure you get sworn in.
Okay, and when will I do that? Tomorrow or next week?
You can see him tomorrow.
Okay.
So we have two positions open, one for... One for a general member from the public, and we have another one from the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Lavash did say he wanted to be put on that.
I'll make a motion that Mr. Lavash be appointed, if any.
I will second it. All in favor? Aye. Now, we have one opening. I don't want to get into specifics or anything. We have to check out one thing. Without getting into... We're not going to make that one other appointment until we check into something. I can't. That's all I can say at this time.
We still have one open spot at this point in time until we do a little more research on this.
All right, we have the C-2014 CDVG grant standard contract, and I'll entertain a motion for me to sign it.
I will make a motion that we assign the standard contract for the CBG FY14 grant.
I will second that. All in favor? Aye. I don't... I think it's already signed, probably. Did I sign it? Oh, yeah, I can't do that. I have to do it in front of the town clerk. I need to sign it even about sixty times. I have to go to the town clerk. Does that have to be notaried? I'll stop in tomorrow, Becky. Okay. We have treasury warrant and invoices.
Treasury warrants, okay. I want a motion that we pay... I have a motion that we approve treasury warrant number 18 in the amount of $34,745.06, and warrant number 19 in the amount of 400... Excuse me, $49,975.92.
I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
I will make a motion that we approve warrant number 20 in the amount of $36,481.86, and warrant number 21 in the amount of $181,635.31.
I will second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Then we'll go to minutes.
Minutes, yes. I would like a motion that we approve the minutes from the meeting from August 26, 2014.
I will second. Any corrections, additions, or discussion?
We were talking earlier. Wrong side.
All in favor? Aye. Close enough. Let's go to the application for Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, subsection 15, wine and malt beverage liquor license for P&amp;B Liquors in VVA Traskas Village Market. Now, just... I'd like really not to go through this whole thing again, so bear with me for a second. We... The Traskas came in already, or P&amp;B Liquors came in, and they had to change the manager because there's a new law in the state of Massachusetts. So this is really something the board has already approved. So I'm not going to go into a big, long discussion about it. I'm just going to ask if anybody has anything to say about the license itself. This is the grant of beer and wine at the old Traskas Village Market for P&amp;B Liquors, and it's really the same application, different person. If there's none, I will close the meeting, and I'll ask for a motion.
We'll make a motion that we approve the license for Traskas Village Market. Do I need the name of the...
As written.
As written.
Yeah, and just so you know also, I don't mean to interrupt, but the new notifications went out to the newspaper. All the voters were notified, and nobody could have any opposition.
Okay.
So it's as written.
I will second. All in favor? Aye. Aye, you got your license.
She was all nervous for no reason.
All right. We have other business.
Other business to Highway Department?
Yep.
Chapter 90, Cold-in-place recycling, Crouch Road. I'm not even sure what this is in regards to.
Into Chapter 90.
Just Chapter 90 fund. Why don't you explain a little bit, Tom?
Yes, just as far as the process or...
Basically what you want to do, not the process itself, but...
I'm looking to do a cold-in-place recycling process on Crouch Road. I got notification from the contractor that awarded the bid stating that a opening came up and is scheduled. Made a phone call to DOT District, made a phone call to you to make sure everything was ready to go, and they will be here Thursday to resurface Crouch Road.
And this is funds that we get from the state?
Right, these are all Chapter 90 funds that we get from the state. As of right now, there's approximately $476,000 in that fund. I'm looking to do this portion of Crouch Road as well as a portion of Route 19 from the Mass Pike to pole number 109, which is just south of Ullerest Road, for this construction season before the snow flies.
Okay, that's all of Crouch Road?
Correct.
And when they want to start?
They'll be here Thursday. They staged equipment today.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we sign the Highway Department's Chap... I'm sorry.
It's okay. Chapter 90.
Chapter 90, environmental... Chapter 90.
Environmental punctualists and project requests.
I will second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Welcome, sir.
Temporary occupancy agreement.
This is just for the Mass DOT project. David, that's what the chair has to say.
Resurfacing intersection improvements, Route 63. This is the same? This is just another...
Town, town reconstruction.
Okay. Will you make a motion?
Yeah, just to sign the temporary occupancy agreement.
I will make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
We have a request from the Warren's Veteran Council to appoint Richard Jalinas to the council to fill a vacancy left by Mr. Hathaway. Needs approval and a motion.
I would be in favor of making this appointment. I know that Mr. Hath... I'm sorry, Mr. Hathaway couldn't stay on it, but I know that he was a valued member, and I think Mr. Jalinas would also be.
Is there a motion?
I can't. I don't want to make a motion. I can't do that.
Well, I will make a motion that we appoint Richard Jalinas to the Veterans Council.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we just have Deb O'Neill. She's here tonight.
Hello.
She's looking to open up Deb's Country Kitchen. Where the former K. Edson's. So she just needs the CB license signed by the board.
Now, while you're standing here, we always give any new business coming into town a chance to, if they want to say anything about their business as far as hours or anything else goes, so we'll offer you the same opportunity.
Thank you. We'll be open seven days a week, Monday through Friday. We'll be open at 6 to 1, and Saturday and Sunday we'll be open 7 to noon. It's all homey cooking that I make there.
And when are you opening?
Tomorrow.
Okay. Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Sue?
I would just like to say, as part of the survey, this was one of the requests of the townspeople that responded to the survey, was they wanted a restaurant. So I hope those people that wanted the restaurant frequent Cafe. Also, I mean, a little bit of your background. This is new for you. You're North Brookfield and Leicester.
Yeah, I had a restaurant in North Brookfield for the last five months. And previous to that, 2001 to 2008, I was in Rochedale. I had my own restaurant, and I worked at Carl's Diner years back.
Yes, she did. Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we sign the average liquor license for Deb's Country Kitchen in Fortin, Milton, on Public Way.
I will second that. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else to come before the board?
The only thing that I have is I've been working with Matt Brown from Greenwood Industries on the Frenzy Town Hall asset. The roof and the warranty that's about to expire.
on the, the frenzy town, I'll ask them, the roof and the warranty that's about to expire. Steve Jerome went out on last Friday, the fifth, and he did some repairs on the flashing. There was a deteriorated pipe flashing on the flapper, and he did repair that. He said everything else looked good, so, I don't know, but he said if there's any problems, they will come out and fix them. So, we'll have to wait for some rain.
Very good.
It's fifteen years, though. So if rain comes on year sixteen, it's our problem. So he did some minor repairs, says everything looks good, according to them.
Did you get that in writing?
And it has been noted, so it's in writing, which is a good thing, that they came out, you know, while we're still within the fifteen years.
Anything else? I have nothing, other than to say, we are, if anybody's interested in that appointment for the senior center director, remember six-thirty next Tuesday, it's an open meeting, anybody can come. Strictly, we held it for one week only because Mr. Lothe Ash wasn't available.
Okay, I wanted to add, that is, next week's meeting, I will have to leave at seven fifteen. I've been invited to the Warren Board meeting, the Warren Library meeting, and they expressed, they sent me an invitation to their meeting about three weeks ago, and I said I would attend, so I just am hoping that I can, we can get our one agenda item wrapped up pretty quickly next Tuesday, so that I can make sure that I participate in the meeting I confirmed. So I will be attending that meeting in Warren Library.
Do you have a firm date and time for the department head meetings? I wanted to ask you.
Yes, department head meetings.
The twenty-third?
It was the twenty-third. We're going to have our first department head meeting, it's a Tuesday, it'll be nine o'clock in the morning. Our topic to start, I can, I can share that with the public, we're going to be going over our hiring policy. Basically, a checklist, everybody will get a packet as to how we're going to hire employees, how we post, and what we, what we need to do to complete the proper way of hiring employee, and how we bring in employee. And in the last fifteen to twenty minutes, we're going to be in an open discussion with the department heads and the direction of the town, and where we're moving, and what their thoughts are, and in working together as, as a group. That's how I'm planning the last fifteen minutes of this meeting, is to see where we are, and to open up these doors, get everybody together, and let's brainstorm. Because everybody individually around here, when I speak to them, has some great ideas, some kind of different ideas and some great ideas. Let's bring them all together and brainstorm. They all have a general interest, they work for the residents, okay, and some, and a lot of them are residents. So it's important that, you know, not only do the residents bring their concerns to us, and to the townspeople and the different departments, but that I hear from the departments on what their concerns are. What can I do to help facilitate their jobs and make them a little bit easier, bring things together as a whole? I think this can be an important part of the department head meetings monthly, is having that fifteen to twenty minutes of open discussion, and airing some, you know, what concerns do you have? What's bothering you? You know, what can we do to make your office work better? How do we facilitate things between, let's say, the treasurer and the counter, or whoever it might be? You know, it's an important thing to, to open up those lines of communication. But we will be ta- we will be tackling policies and procedures a lot the first few months. Just in my short time being here, we've hired people differently. There's no rhyme or reason to how we do some, some of these things, and some documentation's missing, and so we want to make sure that we're standardized forms of how we're doing these things.
Standard practices, questions?
Pretty much.
Before we adjourn, I only have one other thing. We, we're going to have a town meeting coming up in the next month or two. We have, we, have we asked people to submit any articles for that town meeting yet?
The deadline's the eighteenth.
Okay. Wanted to make sure.
And with, with backup, you know?
Explain, explanation of why. I know the board has roughly two or three articles that we put on.
Can you address one of those?
Sure.
You want me to, or you to? Oh, well, the computer?
Oh, I'm glad you said that, I forgot.
We want to address that.
We had an article passed about two or three years ago, at an annual town meeting, I think, that appropriated two, two thousand five hundred dollars for a, to put, buy chairs and to set up a computer room, computer slash, actually, it was a conference slash data room. We looked at it, and we looked at what it was going to cost us to, to actually try to get it, that, the computers we had were pretty old, we got them for nothing, didn't cost us anything to do that, but they're very old. Then we looked at what it was going to cost us to try to set that room up, and we kind of came to the conclusion that it wasn't worth it. It was going to cost too much money to do it. We still have roughly twenty-five hundred dollars left in the account, and it's, again, a setup for a conference, and the money could be spent for a conference or a data room. What the board was considering is, is, we sit in those chairs that you sit in out there too, okay? And we know they're not very good. We're considering at this point to take that twenty-five hundred dollars and to buy all new chairs for this room. That would be a lot more comfortable. And I talked to Madeline about it, and she was a little uncomfortable with it, because she said that at least the townspeople should know, we could go to town meeting to do that, but we kind of would like to do it as soon as we possibly can to get these chairs out and to, and to get new ones. So, that's what we're considering doing, haven't decided if we're going to do that or not yet, but that's what we're considering. To go into the other articles we have, I think the board has two other articles that I remember, and I want everybody to know it. We had one cruiser that flunked inspection so far, and we have one cruiser that, there's no lights on the dash, that hasn't flunked yet because we haven't got it inspected yet. So, I asked the chief of police to bring the cruisers over to a Ford dealership, and to get a written report as to what's wrong with them, what it'll cost to fix and so forth. And if it comes back that we think, we think we need at least one new cruiser anyway. So, we're, we're going to be putting an article on the next special town meeting for a cruiser, and be very careful how we word it, what we might be looking for two instead, depending upon what it, what reports from back have.
Right now, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Right now, we're looking to get inline cars. You know, I, I want to make sure that new cruisers are here to serve and protect our town. You know, personal vehicles, they're meant to be here to do the duties that they need to do on a day-to-day basis, and, and, and serve the people here. So I, I, you know, I'm, I'm adamant personally that those vehicles are used as inline cars, and in service in the public here. And I know that there was an issue also with the expedition.
There's an issue with the expedition, as far as rust and stuff goes, but again, we want to get written reports from a former Ford dealer before we do anything. And we've asked the chief to do that. That's the second out of the last article, and I don't know how many people are aware of this, there is an ongoing problem at the Warren Community Elementary School right now. The playscape and stuff that they use for the kindergarten and so forth and so on, about, there's a large portion of it that can't be used. They've been trying to collect funds in order to buy a new, to fix, to fix the playscape up. I think they collected an appreciable amount of money, but nowhere close to fix it, and I think the board is going to put an article on to see if the people would go along with, with doing that for, to fix the playscape up. That was the only article they have right now. But Peggy, you probably know more about the playscape than I do.
No, actually, I don't.
I know that, I know that they've been trying to collect money, I think, off the top of my head, I think they collected about twenty thousand dollars already to try to, try to fix it.
They've been collecting money for, you know, because they have upgraded already a few years ago. They have very few things out there. I know when my grandson was in kindergarten, he, he was just thrilled that he could ride on a swing every day, because it was only four swings for all those kids. You got, you know, ninety kids out there in four swings, so.
It's my understanding, the construction down there now, it leaves a lot to be desired, and there's some things they won't be, they can't use. So we know that they've been collecting for quite a while, two or three years now, we know they got about twenty thousand dollars, and we're just going to see what we can do. But I'm going to tell you half the reasoning, okay? Half the reasoning being that, as of right now, we're supposed to get ninety percent reimbursement from, for school transportation, regional school transportation. That would amount to about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I also think that we're going to get about, that was from, that was from this fiscal year for next, for the next one, as of July first. I also understand that there's about forty-eight thousand wanting to get back from the last fiscal year, so that would be enough to about two hundred and somewhat thousand, which means we wouldn't be adding anything to the, to the tax rate or anything, it would be using money that's been appropriated, but will appropriate it for something else instead, and still have money left over. That's one of the reasons we're thinking of doing it at this time, just so everybody understands.
There is some funds coming back, I mean, those aren't exact figures, there will be some money coming back, I don't think we have the exact numbers on those, but there is some, you know, and that's how we're thinking of reverting the money, helping out schools a little bit, and then maybe looking at the cruisers or, you know, we do need to do something with them. You know, public safety is, is key, and I know the history there, chief has asked and asked and asked, and, you know, I don't have a problem with the town coming forward and saying he wants to relations on how the cars are, are used and the purpose, you know, but we need them, we need cars. You know, we can't, we can't, we can't afford to replace three or four cars one year and then wait three or four years. We've got to get into a rotation at some point, at some, at some point, so that we're not having, you know, absorbed as much of a hit at once. So I'm hoping that we can move forward with that and start to get them into a rotation, and make sure that we're decommissioning cars we don't need, and we have completely, you know, the fleet that we need. We don't have too many, we don't, you know, what we have will suffice and do the job.
Well, you know, we create an account where every year, X amount is put aside for a new cruiser every year.
It would be nice if we had a capital.
We do.
We did.
We do.
We did.
We have an account that we, and we haven't put any money, I don't think we put any money into it last year, but there's, I'm going to guess about, what, eighty thousand dollars in that right now?
And some of it we spent for trucks.
That's true. But we have, we put in an account, which the idea was to do exactly what you're saying, okay, to put money aside every, every year, so that we wouldn't have to go crazy and try to come up with a lot of money at one time.
It exists.
That's still the intention, okay? We do have some, we use it for trucks for, it's a general account, okay? You can use it for any, any capital purchase. Tom got a truck out of it, so that's the intention.
But you're going to rob Peter to pay Paul.
No, we used to have, no, we used to have separate accounts, one maybe for the highway, one maybe for the fire, and one maybe for the police department. It was the idea to combine them, so that the money would be there, it could be used for any one of them that comes up as needed first.
So you lose your accountability that way? If you have a separate account for each department, do you know where the money is and where it goes? Now you can steal from a general account to buy something for anybody.
No, it's all, it's all stabilization, it takes a, a town vote to take it out.
But we can't take it out unless the people vote.
If, if we earmark fifty thousand dollars for a truck, and it comes in at fifty thousand and five dollars, then we can't buy the truck. So if you put it all in one account, that's called just equipment funding, then if it comes at fifty thousand and five dollars, you can do that.
But it still has to go to town meeting and vote.
It has to go to town meeting, it's an argument.
Town meeting still has to, even the money, even if the money's there, and it's not a new appropriation, town meeting still has to give us the right to spend it. So it's a double vote act, so you vote once to put the money in, and then you vote another time to take the money out.
Do you put enough money into this account to buy three vehicles every year?
Probably not.
No, but those are the habits that we want to start to bring back. We, we want to start practicing that, but times have been so tough, we've had to use those funds for other things that, you know, our rate is, is less and, and the cost of rising, so it's, you know, we're, we're taking the money to use it for other things, and, you know, tax rate's a big issue right now. Ultimately, that's what we want, is to have that, and to have that practice, so that we, you know, can go to town floor and say, hey, we're going to take this money from here, and we're going to buy a new truck.
How do you establish that?
We put money, we try to put money aside every year when we have money, enough money to do it. We used to put a little money in every year, okay? But we haven't really bought any, we haven't bought any vehicles for the police department, we bought some for Highway, and so forth.
We've been trying to buy for police.
Excuse me?
I said, we've been trying to buy for the police department, but they've been denied.
If we would have taken some other money out, we would have put more money back in, but it was really the treasurer's idea, I think, to try to make it into one account.
Initially, I had set it up as an ambulance stabilization account, because you're allowed by code to have an earmarked stabilization account for a capital purpose. So I started it when I started capital planning as an ambulance stabilization, put it away twenty thousand dollars for seven years for the hundred and forty thousand dollar ambulance.
It's still the intention to make, to use that account and build it up. And we still want the people to make the decision, we can spend it. That's not, that's going to happen, it's not going to be any other way.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah?
If you need four, three vehicles a year.
Yep.
Each one's forty grand, you need a hundred and twenty grand each year.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have it.
Our schedule really would be, the biggest schedule we have is for the police department. It used to be every other year we bought a vehicle, okay? So we didn't want to have to buy two at any given time, and we still don't. We may need two now, but the intention still would be to put money aside for one, after, for in one year, keep the second vehicle until the second year, and then just rotate buying and updating the police once a year. That's the way, it's, it used to be every other year for a replacement vehicle.
And skip a year? Because they're a three-year rotation.
Depending on the vehicle.
What?
Depending on the vehicle.
Oh, yeah, it used, I mean, the idea was to never, never open yourself up to have to buy two, two vehicles a year unless you had to. The, the capital planning committee, which meets, we're going to meet at the end of the month, a capital planning committee, anybody that wants to buy any type of vehicle or anything like that, has, or anything, any capital expense, has to put a request into capital planning. Capital planning meets, and those requests have to be in by September. Capital planning then meets and makes the decision, what can we do this year, okay? And what's the priority? So they take all of, everything that's needed and look at priorities across the whole town. So maybe one year it would be a truck for Tom, maybe the next year it would be a police cruiser and so forth, but you try to make it so it's every other year on a police, and the capital planning committee makes the recommendation to the board and to the townspeople what they, what they agree should be bought this year.
So having these, you probably have these every month, you give you a better handle of where you go.
We will know more, like I said, the, the capital planning committee basically meets when it, we'll meet in September, and we, every month now until town meeting, okay? Because we want to know, we want people to come in and explain what they need, okay? Jimmy, Jimmy's on the capital planning, okay? They have to, Jimmy Cordett, right, I mean, okay? They have to come in and explain what they want and justify it. You don't justify it for one person, you've got to justify it to various different departments and so forth, in order to get the capital planning to say yes to it. That's exactly what we're trying to do, is we're trying not to have any great big expense in any given year.
That's the goal. That's where we want to get to. We want to get back to that practice. But it, but it's tough, you know? Age is, is being cut, it's, it's not easy, you know? Finance works hard, you know, try to crunch the numbers, and it's not easy, but that's ultimately where we want to be, so we're, it's an easier decision on the town floor.
Thank you.
And like I said, any, anything that gets spent, even if, even if there's an account for it already, it still has to go to townspeople to vote. We can't, even if the money's set aside, money can be set aside to buy a new police cruiser, money's in there, but you have to go to, you have to go to the town meeting to take the money out.
Right.
Which is posed the problem the last couple of meetings.
Well, it's a good idea because the money's there, now the problem is, this takes two-thirds vote to get it, once, it's, it's harder, harder to take money out of that account, okay, than it is in other aspects of it. If you were to raise and appropriate it, it's majority vote, depending upon where else you take it, it's a two-thirds vote. But we put the money aside so it would be there. And we also rely on it, on the treasurer, because some of the times we'll say that we have money in there to do it, but it would be easier to, to bond it over a certain period of time and keep the money, depending upon what it would cost us to bond it. Now, we've been very lucky, and I say that, we've been very, very lucky over the last five or six years, that the money that we could, that we bond for comes very close to just what we, what we get for interest and so forth. And a while ago, we used to get more, we used to get more money, like if we leave the money in the, in the, in the accounts we have, and they say we have one point three million in there, we get the balance on that, and what used to be, we almost made enough money to buy, buy a car, just not the interest. And that's what we try to do.
Yeah, that's a long time.
So if you have any questions, fine, you can, you can get a hold of me or whatever, and again, we're making that appointment for the senior center director next Tuesday at six-thirty. It's an open meeting, everybody's welcome to come. It will be over by seven o'clock, I guarantee you, it will not go longer than that. There's other meetings we have to get to. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will, uh, we sent the date, yes, I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry, glad you said that.
You said?
Our next meeting is next Tuesday, and it's a note, the regular meeting is the Tuesday after, two weeks from tonight, two weeks from tonight, which will be the twenty-third, from tonight, which will be the 23rd, we'll be meeting on a regular meeting. Next Tuesday, we're meeting just for that one item.
The 23rd's going to be 7:00.
Right, 23rd will be 7:00. Next, next Tuesday is at 6:30.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.